Oh, you ready?
Can I get away, Bill?
Oh, thanks. I was still writing. I apologize. Hi, good evening. I just got my first unchat from, not from Zoom, but a private chat from, from my friend Ira Checkler, who said, where's your hat? You look really ugly tonight. So I guess, I guess, these cameras are pretty accurate. So welcome to the June Board of Education meeting. Hope everybody's doing well. I want to thank everybody again on behalf of the board for all the work that everyone in our Jericho School District has done for our community, for our kids, the parades, the virtual graduations, you know, all sorts of, all sorts of things that are, that look nothing like they've ever looked before, yet nonetheless, look, look beautiful, and it's been really tastefully and well done for our, for our kids in our community. So, Hank, to you and the administration and the staff and teachers and principals, everybody, thank you. Really, I mean, we're almost at the finish line of this, and everybody's got a lot of hard work to do this summer because we don't even have an indication yet what education will look like in the fall. So we know that there's not going to be a lot of breaks for folks over, over, you know, in our school and on our campus. But, you know, thus far, really, kudos to everybody. Thank you, and we look forward to completing the graduations. Are we going, tonight, we have a number of retirees, which is, which is pretty great. To, to all of the retirees, we thank you for all of your service here in Jericho. We wish that your going-away board meeting and some of your going-away events wouldn't have had to be virtual. It's not really the way we envisioned sending people off that have, that have been with us so long and have, have done so much to make, to make Jericho a great place. So, thank you. And before we, before we get to the agenda, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. If we could all rise for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag.
United States of America.
Into the Republic which stands one nation.
Under God indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. So I'm going to move along as, as quickly as I usually like to, but maybe not quite as organized. I, I had to come west. I was out east. I had to come west for an emergency, and I left my laptop and my printed material tonight, which I usually have right next to me. I tried to print them from my computer at home, found out we have no ink. So I quickly borrowed my daughter's laptop, and I'm using my cellphone to follow through. And I don't know if anybody realizes, but when you're looking at your cellphone, the agenda, the words are so, 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 so small. So Hank, why don't you just say a few words while I grab the, the agenda, bring it up to speed, and then we'll get going with the retirees.
Again.
Can I also take a second and move, start to move everyone over who's presenting as you're talking, Hank?
Yeah, fine, please, let's do that.
Great.
So this evening, we are going to recognize our retirees, and you've heard Bill say this before, and you've heard me say this as well. The, the strength of our school district is really built upon the longevity of our staff members. Our staff members have given, and again, years and years and years of service. Probably tonight, we're recognizing hundreds of years of service. And we, we take this opportunity virtually to thank our retirees for all that they've given, and with, with wishes of a long and healthy and fun-filled retirement. As Bill also said earlier, we would so much prefer handshakes and hugs, and maybe at some time in the very near future, there will be an in-person handshake and hug and thank you. Words, words do not say it all in terms of what we feel for you and for what you've given to our school district. Mr. Farrell, are you ready to go?
I am. Our first retiree this evening is my colleague and friend Barbara Krieger. And there's her picture. There she goes. Barbara is leaving the Board of Education after what I would guess is, is a, is a record service of 21 years. I've been on the Board of Education for 11 years, so I can't imagine what 21 years looks like. But I will tell you this, when I first decided to run for the Board of Ed, I, and actually challenged somebody who was on the board, I, I wasn't a popular choice. And I didn't know what to do. And Barbara, who had already been on the board 10 years at that time, had sought me out. I think it was at JAA opening day, and we, we had a nice conversation on the field. And she has been a, a mentor to me and to, to most board members, as she has tremendous, tremendous knowledge, has read more board packets more times than I would say anybody in the country. And we know that because many times at 2:00 AM, Barbara is texting over the typos that are in the board packet. And the, you know, sometimes it's hundreds and hundreds of pages, and she'll say, you know, you missed, you missed the capital I on, you know, page 731. And, you know, that's, some, some people, you know, think that might be, be nitpicking. It's thoroughness. Barbara Krieger has proven for 21 years that she loves and cares about this district. She cares about the issues. She has spent the time, as I said, reading everything, questioning everything. You know, sometimes questions aren't popular. That's, that's the hard stuff we do, we do on the Board of Ed, and Barbara's not, not shy or ashamed to do it. But she's always done it with her heart in the right place and caring for, for our community and for our kids, long after, long after her kids have graduated and gone on to the rest of their lives. And she has multiple grandchildren now that she's going to go get to spend more and more time with, which I know she's anxious to after all of this quarantine. So Barbara, we thank you for your 21 years of service. I thank you for your friendship on the Board of Ed, and always being there when I need to ask a question, and not being afraid to challenge me or ask a question. And you go enjoy those grandchildren and your children and everything you plan to do. And may you have a happy, happy, happy life beyond the Jericho Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That was beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks. Hank?
Good. Tonight, it's firstly, I guess, just from, from administration, Bill, the, the vote of administration is that they look forward to you exceeding Barbara's record of 21 years of service to the Jericho School District. And so we, we look forward to taking that challenge on.
For those, for those gamblers out there, take the under.
Tonight, it's, it's my, my pleasure, my honor. Oh, and that's a great picture, Joni, to talk about Joan Rosenberg. Joni has, has lived here for hundreds of years. Joan moved here when she was in fourth grade, and basically never, never spent a second outside of Jericho since the fourth grade. Her mom, Bernice Bayman, was a member of the Board of Education, and just an incredible, incredible lady who, who I guess paved the way in terms of community service and love of the school district that she imparted on, on Joan. Joan spent 22 years as a guidance counselor, eight years as an assistant principal, seven years as a principal, doing an absolutely incredible job of bringing our staff together, focusing our staff, and providing incredible leadership for our high school. Joan also boasts of seven years president of the JTA, and obviously, our desire to make her an assistant principal had a lot to do with her leadership as the president of the Jericho Teachers Association. She also was a volleyball coach for two, two years, and Joan shares with us that she taught the kids how to spike the ball from a step ladder. There is no one in our district that I can think of that represents a love of Jericho, Jericho inside and out for every minute of her breathing of her every day, is, you know, Joan Rosenberg is the, the picture in the, in the dictionary for Jericho. We thank Joan for her, her service of 39 years of service to the school community, and we wish her a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and we will miss her greatly. Congratulations, Joan.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to all the retirees. When one thinks of the consummate early childhood teacher, a picture of Lydia Markucci should easily come to mind, which you can all see. Her desire to be the best educator possible never faltered, not ever for a minute. Whether in first grade or kindergarten, Lydia loved to learn everything possible in order to create an outstanding early childhood program, and she always succeeded, each year always adding something new. Lydia exudes love and kindness in her life and in her career. In a classroom setting, those attributes translated to the perfect balance of instruction, citizenship, friendship, encouragement, and pizza making. As part of a faculty, it manifests as genuine loyalty, generosity, and sincerity. Lydia creates learners, adults and children, and over the years, there have been so many who will miss her. Lydia, congratulations on your amazing 36-year career in the Jericho School District. Your Seaman family wishes you and your family, Zach, Taylor, and Peter, every ounce of happiness and joy that you deserve. We love you, and we will miss you. I'm going to be here for a while, guys, okay? Kathy Treiber. It is hard to sum up someone's outstanding 35-year teaching career in a few sentences, but I will certainly try. Kathy Treiber started her teaching career as a fifth-grade teacher at Cantiac School, and then came to Seaman when it reopened 23 years ago. Kathy leaves behind hundreds and hundreds of former students, many who are now Seaman parents themselves. That is a lot of lives touched. Kathy loves being a teacher. She loves being part of a school community. She loves to learn new things, and each year, she loves her students and is their fiercest advocate. Kathy is the utmost professional and will always do what's right for her students and for her colleagues. Kathy leaves behind a treasure trove of wonderful memories to all those who have had the privilege of knowing and working with her. We wish Kathy, her husband Fred, and her son Max, all the best for an incredible future filled with love and awesome adventures. Congratulations, Kathy, on your retirement. We love you, and we will miss you. Mary has been my right hand for the last six years, although I was afraid of her the entire first year we were together. I always wondered if they felt that way in the middle school guidance office and in HR. Mary is organized, efficient, take charge, and always stays a step ahead of everyone, especially me. Mary easily juggles 10 things at a time. She is also an amazing gatekeeper. Mary maintains wonderful relationships with the staff, parents, and especially the students. She loves them all. I wish Mary, my therapist, partner in crime, and most importantly, my friend, so much love and happiness as she and her husband Ted move out of state to be near family and closer to their grandchildren. Every member of our school community wishes you only the best of everything in your retirement. We love you, Mary. Congratulations on your 22 outstanding years of service to the Jericho School District. Our custodian, Jack. Jack spent over 30 years in the Jericho School District, the majority of them as head custodian at Seaman School. Thank goodness for Jack. He was always the calm one in the building, always. He neutralized the rest of us. We always get compliments on the cleanliness of our school. Jack was always so proud of that and made sure it stayed that way. In the last four years, Seaman has been just about completely renovated from top to bottom, inside and out. On the building end, Jack managed all of it. It was not easy, but he got us through it. We thank him for his years of service to the Jericho community, his crazy sense of humor, his unwavering calm, and his amazing volleyball skills. Jack was always the unspoken MVP of our student-staff volleyball game. Jack, we wish you so much happiness in your retirement. Ms. Phyllis. Phyllis Walters has been a classroom aide at Seaman for the last 18 years. To know Phyllis is to love her. Her sense of humor guided her as she worked closely with predominantly our kindergarten students. Phyllis knows how to make work fun. Her wicked sense of humor always kept us on our toes. She would do anything for those she worked with, especially the children. Her spunk and spirit is what we will miss the most. Phyllis, Phyllis, we wish you a joyful and healthy retirement filled with so much love. We will miss you. Roseanne spent 20 years in the Seaman cafeteria, not always an easy place to be. She assisted in running the Seaman lunch program efficiently and with a strong sense of order, orderliness. You didn't mess with Roseanne. However, her love for the kids was always evident. She adored them, and they loved her. We wish her so much happiness in this new chapter of her life. Congratulations on your retirement, Roseanne. We will miss you. Now, my colleague, Gina Faust?
Good evening. Congratulations to Joan Goulamarian on your retirement. Nurse G is someone special to so many at Cantiac. No matter what, scraped knees, bellyaches, itches and scratches, sore throats, or just feeling blue, Nurse G made you feel better. Nurse G always took the time to lend an intensive ear, share a warm smile, tell a funny joke, and send you back feeling better. Many of our students aspire to pursue professions in nursing and the medical field because of their admiration of Nurse G. Thank you, Nurse G, for being a wonderful colleague to all and for your tireless dedication to the Cantiac and Jericho School community. We wish you and your family the best of everything in your retirement. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of the retirees. Our first retiree at Jackson, Tina Bellotti. So Tina, your colleagues, our colleagues, we're very eager to share words about you and the love that they have for you. So some words from fellow colleagues to describe Tina. A friend, giving, collaborative, caring. Tina always gave 110% to her students and loved each one dearly, and they loved her right back. Her students loved her so much that they would rather spend time with her as part of her lunch bunch instead of eating in the cafeteria with friends. She spent countless hours meticulously planning lessons with each child's particular needs in mind. She was never concerned about possibly having or doing more work. If it was in the best interest for the child, she did it, no questions asked. Tina thoughtfully included the students that pushed in as well to her classroom. She was always there for her colleagues, and she always found time to lend an ear or offer thoughtful advice. She valued the collaboration as well. Now it is time for Tina to spend time with her sisters, mother, her beautiful daughters, Emily and Erin, and of course, her husband, John. Her first project will be designing her dream kitchen. We all can't wait to see it, Tina. A highlight for colleagues was working closely with Tina. As one colleague shared, while this year has been like a rollercoaster, she wouldn't want to take the ride with anyone else. First grade and an amazing team because of you, Tina. As described by another colleague, you are the quintessential teacher and friend. You always gave 200% of yourself to your students and the coworkers. In every way you define what a remarkable educator should be, your dedication, your hard work, your infectious smile, and your tremendous love for your students continuously shines through to brighten everyone's day. Jackson may be losing a huge piece of its heart, but we could not be more ecstatic for you to embark on the next chapters of your life with John, Emily, and Erin. Wishing you all the best in the next journey of your life, and thank you for being an inspiration to not only your students, but to your Jackson family. Happy retirement, Tina. We will miss you. Joan. Joan, from your colleagues, our colleagues, here are some words that they said about you. You are a true friend. You are always collaborative, extremely organized, super supportive, really, really creative, and of course, really caring. Joan always put in extra work and sacrificed her own time to the benefit of others. Joan is an absolute lifelong learner, always staying current with new trends in technology. As shared by one colleague, many nights, Joan could be found having a contest with other teachers on who can stay the latest at work preparing for the next day. Joan was always eager to try new things. If you went to her with some new app or website you never used before, she was always willing to test it out with you. No matter how out of the box your idea was, she always found a way to gather resources to make it work. If you had an idea of a lesson but couldn't quite figure out how to execute or what materials were needed, she always was creative enough to help you create a lesson from bare bones. A unique and amazing quality about Joan is that once she finds out that you are interested in the topic, she will find out everything about it for you. We know that Joan likes walk, likes walking, nature, and most importantly, her family, which she absolutely loves. Joan, we are going to miss you here at Jackson. Our doors are always open to you. But Joan, happy retirement, and we wish you all the best in the next chapter of your life. Congratulations. Fran Rivera. Fran, lots of words from your colleagues came in as well. Fran is kind, she's caring, supportive, special, creative, talented, generous, warm. Fran is a very special colleague who will do anything to help others, including all of the children. She is never, ever late because she sets a timer. She is not just a colleague, but a close friend to many here in the building. Her dedication to her students, her profession, her family, and her friends is unmatched. She always went the extra mile for others. She has served as an inspiration to others during their rough times. Fran has a huge heart. Fran was a source of comfort and guidance for others, taking rookies under her wing. She gave her time to mentor others and never backed down from a challenge, always made her speech sessions fun, and she always made you feel relaxed and a little less nervous. Fran will always be remembered for her kind heart and energetic soul. As one colleague shared, "Well done climbing the mountain, Fran. Now you can finally enjoy the view." Fran, we love you. We'll miss you. We wish you all the best in your retirement with your family. Don't forget to visit, as some had said. Happy retirement, Fran, and all the best in your next chapter of your life. Debbie Maris. Some words to describe Debbie from fellow colleagues. Debbie's patient, she's kind, she's generous, she's caring, she's nurturing, she's professional, she's calm, and she's sincere. Debbie is described as being made up of lots of patience and kindness. She always encouraged her students to do and be their best. She made them feel like they could achieve their goals. Under pressure, Debbie never loses her cool. She always displays grace, authenticity, and commitment. She willingly supports students and teachers each and every day. Debbie has a soft heart and is soft-spoken. Her caring and nurturing ways made her a wonderful teacher and friend. Her kindness and generosity to colleagues and students will never be forgotten. She has gone from coworker to friend of so many people in the Jericho School District. Debbie is a special friend, colleague, and community member. The Jackson staff are fortunate to have had the fine pleasure of working with Debbie for two decades plus. Debbie helped contribute in making Jackson the caring, loving school that it is today. Debbie and her husband Glenn are a remarkable and hospital couple. They invite international students from NYU Dental School who don't have family in the United States to their home for a Thanksgiving dinner. Now that she is retiring, she could spend more time purchasing flowers at Myers Farm, gardening, and cooking. Glenn and Debbie will be celebrating Jamie's wedding in hopefully August. The wedding date had to be rearranged because of obviously the stay-at-home guidelines. May all the years ahead bring you great joy and relaxation with your loved ones, Debbie. We wish you a happy retirement. We will truly miss you, and you're always welcome back at Jackson and the Jericho School District. Congratulations to our four retirees. And next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Gately.
Thanks, Alex, and, and congratulations to all of Barbara's retirees being recognized this evening. I've known Jeanne O'Brien for 15 years now. That's how long I've been principal of the middle school. She's been an important part of our school in Jericho for a much longer time than that. Jeanne is one of the pioneers of our restructured special education program. When the model of special education was transitioned to the co-teaching model, she was one of the first teachers in the program, and we could not have been more fortunate to have someone of Jeanne's sensitivity, creativity, patience, and intelligence in this important role. Her hard work, her innovation, and professionalism set the stage for a highly successful model of learning that's benefited countless numbers of students. I'm pretty sure many of you who know Jeanne have had a similar experience to me. When I met Jeanne, I feel like she's someone I've known all my life, like my mother, like my sister Jackie or my cousin Kathy, like so many of the best teachers that I've known in my life. Because Jeanne reminds you of all those amazing people in your life who possess confidence, commitment, and passion to what they do, and a sincere interest in helping others and making everyone around them better. Just by being around Jeanne and knowing her and being her, seeing her friend inspires me to be a better person. And that's the way that Jeanne O'Brien is because the middle school just won't be the same without her, and we're going to miss her terribly, but we wish her all the best in her retirement. Peggy Aliva. First of all, I want to say, I hope there's going to be an investigation because Peggy's one of the few people who managed to retire before this whole quarantine started. So she's the only one tonight, I think, who actually had a party, or she had the last party. So I hope this will be looked into. And I think there's some irony in the fact that we're invited to honor someone whose primary job is to replace us. Whenever someone was sick or had to call in absent, Peggy was the first voice that you heard. She kind of reminds me of the mom in Ferris Bueller's Day Off. Matthew Broderick tricks her into thinking that he's sick, and she makes him soup, and she tucks him in for the night. So Peggy, for the day, rather. So Peggy's like that good mom. She's always so kind and encouraging and understanding. And I theorize that I think that she's contributed to a greater degree of absenteeism because no one minds having to talk to her on a Thursday or Friday morning before a long weekend to say they can't make it in. Peggy Aliva is just one of those people. Her sensitivity, her generosity, her efficiency, her kindness, her intuition, she represents the best of us. She's the heartbeat of our school, and it's really ironically going to be impossible to replace her. So Peggy, we wish you all the best of health and enjoyment in your much-deserved retirement. It's now my pleasure to introduce Dan Salzman.
Thanks, Don. Bonnie Arneson has been a reading and special education teacher at Jericho High School for 24 years. Most recently, Bonnie has been co-teaching in the English Department as an, and is an integral member of the Special Education Department as an advocate for students in the Jericho High School Learning Center. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Bonnie's love of theater and performance was demonstrated in her role as the Assistant Director of the High School Musical for 11 years and the Director of the High School Drama Production for six years. Bonnie has supported our students in so many ways over the years, and we wish her best of luck in the next chapter of her life. May I now introduce Lionel Chan, Dr. Lionel Chan, Curriculum Associate of World Languages and Family and Consumer Science.
Thank you, Dr. Salzman. I would like to acknowledge the dedication and accomplishments of Marcella Burkovsky. During her years with the Jericho School District, she has taught all grade levels of Spanish, including our advanced-level courses. Marcella is a talented instructor who prepares students for high levels of fluency in Spanish before they enter college. Students are so fond of her teaching style that they choose to follow her from one course to another. She has also served as the faculty advisor to the Spanish Honor Society, spending countless hours rehearsing with students for performances and coordinating numerous events throughout the school year. We will always remember Marcella for the strong bonds and relationships that she has formed with students and colleagues. She's been a leader, a friend, and a go-to person for everyone with whom she works. Anyone and everyone who needs advice goes to Marcella. We thank Marcella for always being a role model who is cooperative, collaborative, caring, and always willing to step up to any challenge. We express our deepest gratitude for her dedication to our students, to the foreign language program, and to the Jericho School community. This will always be your home, and we will miss you tremendously, and we wish you the very best. Now, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Cummings, Curriculum Associate for Science and Technology.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the pleasure of thanking Ellen Hempel for her many years of service at the Jericho School District. Ellen was hired in 2002 to teach chemistry at the Jericho High School, and over the past two decades, she has taught in the high school and the middle school, sharing her knowledge and love of science and chemistry, earth science, and for the last five years, AP Biology. Alongside being a cornerstone of the Science Department, she's also met the students' needs outside of the classroom through her many extracurricular, co-curricular activities. She helped bring back the Science Olympiad team to the high school, led astronomy nights, and worked at our steam day, just to name a few. In one of Ellen's first In one of Ellen's first annual evaluations, her curriculum associate at the time wrote, "Miss Hempel is a skilled and compassionate educator who is genuinely interested in the academic and emotional well-being of her students. She not only strives to help them succeed, but also to appreciate the role science plays in their lives. Through the years, Ellen, absolutely nothing has changed. She's meant the world to me as a friend and a colleague, and I know the feeling is shared by all of her students and coworkers." Ellen, again, I'd like to thank you, congratulate you for your time at Jericho, and I want to wish you and Skip a very happy retirement. Now I'd like to introduce Dr. Eric Sundberg.
James Whalen. He is a scholar, he is a coach. He has worked with every kind of learner that we have at Jericho. Though he's probably most happy, and he's certainly been most extremely successful working with students in many of our AP classes at Jericho. To me, he is proof that any amount of academic ledger domain that we're asking people to use in working with students, nothing replaces a deep knowledge of content and enthusiasm for one subject. I would, I would say that because Jim is such an enthusiastic student of history, that's what makes him such a successful teacher of history. So Jim, I am going to miss you, and I honor everything that you represent. Judith Adler. Judy has taught social studies for 24 years in Jericho Middle School and Jericho High School. I think it's fair to say that his heart is really with middle school students, and she has done so much to actualize the vision of Jericho Middle School. Every year I get compliments from parents on her behalf because of all she does to teach organizational skill and note-taking. I would say nobody has done more than Judy to foster interdisciplinary teaching in Jericho Middle School. She has had a number of very close and successful relationships with English teachers on her team over the years. And of course, she has long taught a very popular exploratory class on history through the movies. So she has really helped shape Jericho Middle School and social studies instruction in Jericho, so thank you very much Judy. And it's now my pleasure to introduce Dr. Catherine Bear.
Rich Roselli has been an educator and performer for 36 years, the last 15 of which have been in Jericho. His ability to connect with students and inspire greatness is unmatched. Mr. Roselli has a passion for music, is an exemplary model of a lifelong learner and performer. In the last two years alone, he started a middle school jazz ensemble to feed into the high school jazz ensemble and began an AP Music Theory Program. I know that I speak for the department when I say that we are proud to call Rich a colleague and a friend. Rich, thank you on behalf of the thousands of lives you've changed. I'm currently working out of a contract requiring you to come back and visit us regularly. Please keep in touch. Next, Mr. Greg Sloan, Curriculum Associate for School Counseling.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to say a few words tonight about Debbie Lisa Brown, affectionately known as DLB to all those who know her best. It was hard to imagine DLB in any other profession. Her role as a school counselor for the past 20 years is actually her second career as she got her start in the business world in the field of advertising. Her eye for detail and creative spirit certainly carried over into the various presentations designed and delivered by the counseling department. One of her most exceptional qualities is what we have come to call compassionate candor. Her ability to say it like it is, all while backed by genuine heartfelt warmth. This is undoubtedly one of the many reasons that her students and colleagues gravitate to her, not to mention the ever-available access to peanut butter sandwiches in her office. DLB is the consummate student advocate and has an incredible work ethic, making herself available to students day or night, and even over the weekends. DLB, you've made such a difference in the lives of hundreds of students. You leave us a legacy that will carry on for years to come. We will all miss you dearly and wish you nothing but the best in retirement. I'd now like to turn it over to Dr. Sapienza. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Jeff Baum has spent the past 33 years meeting the needs of all students, specifically those with learning differences. He's touched the lives of thousands of students and their families as a classroom teacher, reading teacher, special education facilitator, curriculum associate, and coordinator of preschool special education, out-of-district programs, special testing, and transition services. Jeff has been a part of Jericho's students and families' lives at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Not many can say that. Aside from Jeff's knowledge in a variety of facets of special education, his caring demeanor and willingness to help are second to none. His commitment to our kids and their individual successes is evident and will be sorely missed. Jeff, we thank you for all of your efforts, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. Ann Levine has enjoyed a remarkable 18-year career as a clerk typist in the Jericho High School Learning Center. Over the course of her career, she certainly has been the glue that holds the Learning Center together. If you needed something, Ann was there to get it. Not sure who to call, Ann already had that person on the line. Ann, speaking for myself and the entire Learning Center, we are all better because of you. I will miss your commitment to all of us in the Learning Center and the drive with which you've accomplished any and all tasks that came across your desk. However, Ann, what I'll miss most about you is the care and concern that you conveyed to every student that walked through our doors. Whether it was the nervous incoming freshman on the first day of school, or the anxious 11th grade student preparing to sit for a regents exam. Your demeanor, your words, your presence made everything okay. Thank you, Ann, for all you've done, and please enjoy a healthy and relaxing retirement. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ben Chufu.
Bill Henness. Bill Henness is retiring as head maintainer for the Jericho School District after 30 years of service. Bill is a master mechanic and technician who has rebuilt, replaced, and/or serviced every mechanical system in our district. These included plumbing, HVAC, telephone systems, and pool management. We consider Bill to be our maintenance historian because of his vast knowledge and expertise. Bill is also the president of our CSEA unit, and in this role, he's always advocated for the welfare of his membership. We thank Bill for his dedication and service, and we wish him health, happiness, and a brand-new Mustang GT in his retirement. Margie Smith. Margie has been a teacher at our school district for 21 years. In that time, she has been our official greeter in both the middle school and in central office. She's spent many years in the middle school entrance office, welcoming many, many students, parents, and friends to the middle school. Over the past several years, Margie has joined us in central office as a phone operator, where she also greets all visitors to our school district. And in that role, she did a wonderful, wonderful job. We'd like to thank Margie for her dedication and service, and we wish her only the best health and happiness in her retirement. I'd now like to introduce Mr. David Cohen.
Thank you. For 22 years, Beverly Roche has called Jericho District her professional home. But selfishly, I'd like to say and think that the last two have been her best as she's been at the high school, serving in such an important role in our café and in the academy program. Beverly was one of the first people that I met when I first came to Jericho last summer. She came to my office and introduced herself to me, and it shocked me right from the start that this was a woman who was all about kids. She has a huge heart, she cares deeply about each and every student that walks through our doors. She's compassionate, she's a tremendous advocate, and she has one of the biggest hearts of anyone that I've ever met. She is so motherly, she has done such an amazing job in Café 126. She's the keeper of the hot chocolate, but she's also the keeper of goodwill and smiles and amazing heart for everyone who comes through those doors. Beverly, you've been such an amazing partner to Mr. Velez and to everyone in the academy. But most importantly, I, well, at least most importantly for me, you've been an amazing partner to me. We are so excited for you, Beverly, and we know that your retirement will mean so much. But we also know that it's going to mean that so many other people in the high school have to step up to ensure that our students are welcomed and embraced in the café and the academy. We will miss you so much, Beverly, and I know that it's also all of the students in the academy and those that spend time in the café that will miss you the most. We wish you all of the best, we wish you joy, and we wish you tons of love. Congratulations. And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Kim Congr.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of speaking about Marie Solano. She's worked in the district in the technology department for most of her career. I was fortunate to work closely with Marie when she was assigned to support our PPS department. Boy, did we hit the jackpot. Marie has been such an asset in so many areas. I have never met a more organized and helpful individual. Marie is what I consider technology-friendly. She had a way of making people who fear technology comfortable and empowered. She wouldn't do it for you, but she would send you lots of tutorials, lots of visuals, and hold your hand through it. And for that, I've learned many, many new tricks and skills on the computer, so I thank Marie for that. Marie not only worked with me, but she supported our teachers and families. Marie loved what she did, and it showed in every interaction you would have with her. I will miss her calming presence and her warm smile. She has set the bar high for those who will follow. Congratulations on your retirement, Marie. I wish you good health and happiness on the next chapter. You will be missed. And now, Mr. Michael Hahn.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak briefly in honoring the retirement of Mr. Joseph Kytowski. Joe has worked as a cleaner for the Jericho School District in the Buildings and Browns Department since 1998. For those of you who may not know Joe, he was assigned to work on the evening shift over on the second floor in the middle school. He was always involved in setting up for our board meetings and the various events held throughout the year in the district here. Joe took great pride in his work to make sure that after every day's activities or the evening events, that the school was kept clean, set up, and ready to go for the next day. He was recently recognized in our November 2019 board meeting for 20 years of service to the district before submitting his retirement papers in December, making his official retirement date January 1st in 2020. Joe did not really want to retire, but unfortunately, he did so to spend what little time he had left with his family and grandchildren. Joe had undergone a series of operations before starting and receiving chemotherapy treatments for about six months prior to his retirement. Unfortunately, at the young age of 61, Joe had lost his battle with stomach cancer and passed away this past March. I can only believe that when he started this job, he had one day thought that he'd be able to enjoy his family and grandchildren during his retirement. Sad to think that after all of these years of work and service, that was not his final outcome. Joe is a great loss to our team, and his dedicated service will certainly be missed by all of us. I ask us all to appreciate what time we do have left, and because we don't know what tomorrow brings. Live, love, laugh, keep Joe and his family in our thoughts and prayers. Godspeed, Joe. Thank you.
That's a tough one to follow. Rose Olivia. Rose started out as a three-hour cafeteria employee almost 20 years ago, and has been a devoted employee, friend, and team player for two decades. Rose was appointed to the position of head cook in September 2017, and has worked tirelessly preparing homemade meals for our students. Rose makes homemade meat and marinara sauce, and for those of you who don't know, the meal appears on the menu as pasta à la Rosa. And it is the most popular homemade meal enjoyed by all students for so many years. The cafeteria staff affectionately calls her Rosa and Rosie, and has embraced her loving nature and quiet demeanor. Congratulations, Rose, to a happy and fulfilling retirement. Lynn Annie Ello. I've had the extreme pleasure of working with Lynn for the past decade, and she has blessed Jericho for over 16 years of dedicated service. Her skill set was an important asset of the business office in navigating the nuances of state aid. I would like to congratulate her on her retirement, as she will certainly be missed by her colleagues and friends. While we are saddened to see her go, I am confident that she will find the same success and happiness at retirement that she experienced during her time here. Retirement will surely offer her many new opportunities, which I know she will embrace wholeheartedly, just as she did at Jericho. Congratulations, Lynn. Lori Anne Savina.
Hello, everyone. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. It is my great honor and privilege to congratulate Salvatore Capone. He came to us in 2014, anxious to become a school bus driver. Most of Sal's career was spent driving a nice public bus with public transportation. So having an opportunity to work with our children was a delight for Sal. He kind of always flew under the radar. You really never knew when he was coming and going, but he was always on time and never missed a day. He loved driving in challenging weather and will be very deeply missed. We wish Sal all the best in his future, in his travels, and all the endeavors that he has planned for the head. Thank you, and on to you, Hank.
Thank you. Thank you all to our presenters this evening. And again, I wish that we could have done this live instead of virtually, but again, with the deep appreciation from our school community for all of the service of all of the people that we're recognizing tonight. We wish you all the best, and with that, Mr. Farrell, take it away. Bill, I think you're muted.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Good.
Yeah, I just said quite a bit and nobody got to hear it. How was that? So first of all, I'd also like to thank and congratulate all our retirees this evening. I did note, it was, you know, doing it via Zoom is kind of interesting. You have everybody's picture up there. I find, I think Hank, we finally found a way to stop Joan Rosenberg from crying by putting a still picture up. But really, congratulations to everybody, and I will try to read this motion. As I said, it's on my phone. Okay. Whereas all of the retirees have had continuous service for a significant number of years, and wherever they have provided dedicated service to the children of Jericho, and whereas each of them have been a capable, cooperative, and loyal member of the board, of the community and the school, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education extends sincere appreciation on behalf of all of our retirees for a job well done, be further resolved, the Board of Education extends honor upon each of you who has been an important part of the history of this community. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Once again, congratulations. Just so I don't miss it, we'll do recommended actions. Approval of minutes be resolved, the Board of Education make any and say corrections and move the approval of the minutes of the community forum dated May 14, 2020, the regular meeting dated May 19, 2020, and the public hearing dated June 2, 2020. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. We'll now move to the Student Board Representative Report. Before we do that, I'd like to congratulate and say thank you to our, to our student council reps from this past week, Luke Blair and Sophia Kim. Thank them for all they've done to make Jericho a better place, to always bring the the voice of the students to the meetings and tell us what's going on on a monthly basis. And to our Board Representative Drew Nyberg-Smith, congratulations to you as well on graduation. Thank you for serving with us on the Board of Education. It's been an interesting year to do that, to say the least. And I know you have a report that you'd like to deliver via Zoom for all of us. And I know you have a report that you'd like to deliver via Zoom for all of us tonight. So now the stage is yours.
Thank you. Needless to say, these past few months have been a very trying time for our Jericho community. And I just wanted to start off by saying a huge thank you to the Board of Education and all Jericho administration for being proactive and receptive through this time. The shift to online schooling was a shock to the system for Jericho students and administration. We quickly got the hang of this new way of life. I can say firsthand that the loss of spring sports, spring shows, and traditional end of senior year celebrations was and still is a very tough pill to swallow. Not only are seniors missing out on their long-awaited lasts, but underclassmen are missing the opportunity to look up to and collaborate with this batch of seniors. Each individual club, sport, and production has gone above and beyond in honoring their seniors and ensuring we all feel celebrated. On behalf of the class of 2020, thank you to everyone who made these small tokens of celebration possible. We know the hard work and dedication that was put into making these slideshows, video montages, and many more ways of honoring our seniors. Additionally, the video yearbook made by our Video Yearbook Club headed by Ms. Ryder was a bittersweet tribute to our year, and I know a lot of students appreciated the footage that reminded them of everyday Jericho life. The seniors have all walked the stage for their unofficial graduation, which went very smoothly. And we are, and we all are looking forward to the unofficial, to the official graduation, all pieced together on June 28. Lastly, I wanted to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Greshman, Dr. Artiles, Mr. Cohen, and Ms. Rosenberg for guiding me through the year and welcoming me with open arms. My experiences on this board this year were unforgettable, and I thank you for your soft whispers explaining to me what was going on, your proofreading my speeches, and your dedication to making the student voice in Jericho heard and represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. And as you said, it is a tough way for us to sit here and congratulate all of our, all of our graduating seniors. It certainly is a strange year to be a senior and one I'm sure none of you will, will ever forget. And, you know, students have been, have been great and a great part of all of the, the things that the district and Denise has helped coordinate. I think that we will have the greatest virtual graduation in the history of virtual graduations. I'm not sure who we're comparing it to, but I'm sure ours is going to be better. And I look forward to, to watching it live. And I, you know, thank, thank the, the administration for letting us all be a part of it. It was great. Next year, I think our board rep will be Chloe Liu. Chloe, I don't know if she's watching tonight, but we'll welcome her as well. So again, Drew, tell us where you're going to school, Drew.
University of Pennsylvania.
There you go. Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome. I hope you get to actually do that on campus. I'm, I'm sure that everybody's anxious to, to start freshman year in a, in a regular way, since they've finished their senior years in a, in a different kind of way. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the agenda now, we usually have the PTA Council Report. We don't have that scheduled, but I'd like to, to acknowledge Maria Bombes, who will be the outgoing PTA Council President. Maria has been an absolute, absolute pleasure to work with, a great voice, a great voice for the parent community, and a great collaborator in everything that we've done. So Maria, if you're there, thank you so much for all that you do. And I know we'll, we'll, we'll certainly see you at meetings and everywhere else. So thanks again. With that, Hank Superintendent's Report. Unless you want me to do an audit report real quick?
Yeah, why don't you do a quick audit report and then, then I'll take it.
Sure. This evening, the board met with all of our different auditors and got, you know, year-end reports. And even that was different. We did that, you know, obviously via Zoom as well. But their reports were thorough. We were all given copies of their reports via digitally via email. Every one of those reports, you know, was a glowing report, as they have been almost, I'll have been every year that I've been on the board, and they've been even more glowing since Victor Manuel and, and his staff have been at the helm. You know, every dollar in this district is accounted for, every check is accounted for. And, and, you know, don't, people shouldn't take that for granted. The, the last three months, you know, as, as the auditor said, paying bills and working remotely and coming into the office and, and making sure that, that things were done properly in a, in a, in a setting that we've never really seen before. Kudos to you as always, Victor. You're the best at what you do. We appreciate it. We know you have a great, great, great team behind you, and we appreciate them as well. So thank you. Hank?
Thanks, Bill. Let me tag team on to that comment about Victor and the business office. Again, just to underline, as things turned upside down, our bills were paid on time. Our, we never missed a payroll. It was, it was business as usual in terms of our business function. And again, just to underline, kudos to Victor, kudos to his team for doing an incredible job over the last three and a half months. Victor, you're the best. Thank you. Again, tonight, I'd like to just start with, with a bunch of thank yous. Again, the most challenging of times that no one would have ever expected, but so many stepped up and, and performed with, without a, a solid game plan, performed so well. From, from our teaching staff to our administrative staff, just an incredible job of supporting our kids. And I've now, over the last two or three weeks, have gotten more positive emails thanking teachers, thanking administrators for the work that they've done over, over the last 10, 10 weeks. With that, Bill, you also mentioned the, the graduations and the celebrations. I've actually, from some of the parades, have heard people say, oh, my God, the, the, the elementary reverse parade, the middle school reverse parade, we, that, that was as good as it gets. I think we should start doing that every year. So I, I think, I think we're going to be challenged in future years to do more and more and more and better and better. Again, congratulations to all the staff members, the administrators, teachers, who put all of the celebrations together so that we could do the best job possible in acknowledging our, our students as they graduated from fifth grade to eighth grade and now from our, our high school graduation. Just incredible work, and I could not be more proud as the superintendent have watched so much positive outcome in the, the most challenging of times. Also, an, an opportunity to, to thank our community for supporting us in the recent election. Again, a challenge in terms of mailing out 12,000 or 13,000 absentee ballots, opening them and counting them was a chore that was handled incredibly well by our staff with the support of our administrative team. And again, with the successful outcome. So a thank you to our school community, to our PTAs, to the Jericho Teachers Association, and to our administrative cabinet for all working so hard to getting our budget passed, passed so handily as well. And a congratulations to both Jill and Vivya on their election and reelection to our Board of Education. And we, we wish you well over the, your coming three years on the board. Also, Bill mentioned the thank you to Maria. She has been an incredible PTA Council President, and we really want to take this opportunity to thank her. Her leadership over the last two years, four years has been incredible. And her leadership and her support over the last 10 weeks has also meant so much to, to all of us. So, okay, with that, let me do a couple of updates. Effective with the, the coming week, all of our track, our track, our fields, our tennis courts, and all of our playgrounds will be open to our community. One of the discussions that we've had and one of the recommendations we've had from our board is while we usually close our fields and our playgrounds over the summer months, being that many of our kids are not going to be away this summer, many of our kids are not going to be at camps. The board has asked us to keep our playgrounds and our fields open so that the children of our community have some, some options other than their iPads and Chromebooks. Also, I wanted to inform our community, and I need to be really specific. We will be running a summer special education program. The program we will be running is strictly and solely for our 12-month special education students. Those are students whose IEPs dictate 12 months of service. There are approximately 37 or 38 kids who are eligible. Kim Conger has put together a, an excellent plan to provide face-to-face services for those kids. She's worked closely with Lori Ann to put together a transportation schedule. And we will be running, again, that special education program and only that special education program this summer at Caniac Elementary School. Usually, we, at every meeting, we talk about our enrollment report. Obviously, at this point, tracking enrollment has been a little, a little more challenging than usual. We are continuing to do the best we can to track both our incoming and outgoing students so that we are appropriately staffed for September. We will continue to update the numbers of classes in all, in all three elementary schools, our middle school and high school. Ben has kept a very close tag on our current numbers and is watching closely in terms of kids moving into the district and kids moving out of the district so that we will be appropriately planned and staffed for the possible, we hope, the possible reopening of school in September. The last and probably the most important topic that I wanted to share is that we are, we are in the process of, and we have established three, three committees within our school district that will kick up and begin operations over the next, over the next couple of weeks. The three committees are one dealing with our reopening, one dealing with the review of the virtual learning experience that took place and planning for what that would look like in September. And a third committee that we have just determined that we will be starting dealing with the, the current situation in our country and specifically dealing with equity, equity within our schools, equity education, equitable treatment within our school district. So with that, let me ask Ben to spend a couple of minutes to briefly talk about the reopening, the reopening committee. Ben?
Ben, you're on mute.
You need to unmute.
Got it. I'm sorry. Thanks, Hank. As we mentioned in May, we've established a district planning team consisting of administrators in several areas. The areas include athletics and co-curricular activities, business, food services, facilities, student health and welfare, human resources, curriculum and instruction, technology, and transportation. Each of these team leaders will convene subcommittees for their specific areas. The committees will include parents, teachers, administrators, staff, and in some cases, students. We'll be seeking volunteers for each of these committees very, very soon. The goal for each subcommittee will be to formulate a plan in each area for school reopening in September. Our timeline is really, really short, so the subcommittees will be meeting virtually in the next two weeks. And each committee will submit their conclusions to the full district team by July 6. The district planning team will meet, review every recommendation, and formulate a comprehensive plan, which we will submit to the state on or before July 14. We really look forward to meeting with all these people and getting this plan going.
Thank you, Ben. Barbara, could you please spend a minute or two talking about your committee, please?
Thank you. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee will take a look at remote instruction as it has occurred over the last few months in terms of both academics and social emotional learning. We will then put together a plan for September for both academics, social emotional learning, whether or not we are in person and back to school, or if we are going back to remote instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. We are also establishing a third committee that we're, we're discussing right now in terms of the, the members of the committee and the training of the committee and the specific charge. But basically, what we're looking at is looking at our school district in terms of both instruction, what's embedded in our instruction, and ways that we can further raise awareness within our school community, within our school district, with our students regarding sensitivity to racial, religious, cultural differences that do exist within our school community as well as that exists within our, within our nation. In all three committees, we will have representation from students, from staff, and from parents. We will also ask board members if they would like to participate in any of the three committees as well. So again, we look forward to these three committees getting off the ground once we, as we close school in the next day, getting the committees up and running. I think that's, that's all I have, Bill.
Okay, I'm just rolling through something. Okay, let's look at the chat for a second. It's the opportunity for the public to be heard. There's, there's many kudos to, to my colleague Barbara Krieger in the chat room right now, thanking her. There's a couple of questions here that we should just get to from Mr. Chekla. How have we remodeled the program that was supposed to assist the accelerated students to some of them so that?
Basically, there was no ability for us to actually remodel the program because we cannot bring those students into school this summer. We are moving that, that program. I think we announced it two board meetings ago. We are going to move that program to the summer of 2021.
Thanks. Have you got any feedback from that? Any, any questions?
My understanding, my understanding is from, you know, getting feedback from both Brian Cummings and, and Holleen Kriegstein, who are both working on that program. The, the, the feedback was obviously disappointment, but understanding that we, there was no way that we could run that program this summer.
Okay. Sam Proman asks, has the district established any new requirements for teachers to take professional ed courses to improve distance learning in case that's where we are this fall?
Again, Barbara's committee is charged with assessing the strengths and weaknesses of our virtual instructional program over the last three months. And as part of that, there will be recommendations that if we are still at remote learning in the coming year, what do we need to do to improve that? Do we need to provide, obviously, staff with, with additional training? And again, those recommendations will come directly out of Barbara's committee.
Thank you. Those are, those are all the questions in my chat. Anybody see any other questions? I don't.
Can I just ask, who are the members of the committees at present? And how will additional stakeholders be added? You mentioned that there will be people from all different groups. Can they write to you to volunteer? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we, we would ask, and you know, and we, I think Denise has already received many, many email requests for people to serve on the, on the committee. So people can email either Denise, Barbara, Ben, or me with their interest in serving on the committees. We've been in touch with Ron Bederber and asked him to assist us in getting staff members to join us. And then we will work with the high school administration to assist us in getting some kids who are around this summer to, to join the committees as well.
And who's on them currently?
I, I can give you the names. The District Planning Committee is, is all of central office. And Denise is on the committee with us, representative from El Paris has been working with us, as well as John Mankiewicz, Victor's going to be on, Tracy Gillette from Food Services, Michael Hahn from Facilities. Kim is going to do student health and welfare. I'm going to be doing human resources. Barbara's going to be doing curriculum instruction. Patrick will be doing technology, and Lori Ann will be doing transportation. And each of us will establish subcommittees in each of our areas to discuss what the implications are of opening school in September for each of our specific areas. And we have a ton of information from the CDC, from NICE, from other states who have reopened and thinking about reopening. Plus, we have data from 75 school districts in New York State who are beginning to formulate plans. And we have templates from each of those school districts. So all this data, we're going to share with committee members so that they can think about what school would look like in September.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to move on to the, the, the agenda, move further on the agenda. I'm actually going to excuse myself. I, I've got something I, I must take care of. I'm going to ask Jill to take over. Jill, you prepared to do that?
Yes.
Thank. I may be back, but you take, take, take over. Thanks.
Okay, so I think we are up to all the resolutions and the business part. Okay, so adoption of board policy 73. adoption of board policy 7315, student acceptable use policy. The recommended motion, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the first reading of the following policy, student acceptable use policy. Do I have a motion to accept the first reading?
Some.
Barbara, second. Pam?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. There's one part, it doesn't really sound like it makes sense. It says, um, parents.
I had, like, the same comment that.
Right, indicating they are opting their child. It doesn't say opting their child out or just opting their child doesn't make sense to me. So if we could get that to make sense.
Well, I, I saw that. We'll, we'll take a look at that for you.
And it also, it's not clear when it says if you're opting your child out, that you are opting them out of everything or you can, can opt them out of the educational part. I wasn't, I couldn't, I don't, there was a watermark there, so I wasn't sure what that actually said.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Also in that paragraph, the last line of paragraph, it says, further, all DCS use must be in support of education or research and consistent with the goals and purposes of the district. So now that we have lent Chromebooks and iPads to our students, is that saying they can't ever use it just to contact their friends or to play a game over the summer or in between class time? It's hard to believe that everybody would really only use those computers and iPads for academic use. It doesn't quite seem fair to require that. I don't know, is there any board member who has ever used their iPad that they were issued by the school for anything other than academic work and research?
Yes, I have my Peloton app on my iPad.
Okay, so I think that's fair to allow the kids to do it also. I mean, that's my point. Just, this sounds very restrictive and I don't think it's really fair, especially at this point in time.
Barbara, I agree with you in, in terms of fairness, but I, I think that that may have originated from, I don't know whether it was a legal recommendation. And Steve, I, again, I'm not sure whether we originally heard when adopting all of our technology use policies, whether that was something that was recommended that we incorporate. But I wonder whether you could research, research that for us, whether there's a reason that we, we added that, either a legal reason, and if there's not a legal reason for it, then let's, let's adjust the policy to provide the kids with more flexibility.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
So, I guess, well, so everyone, we're now, we're on voting in favor of the first, acceptance of the first reading with possible changes.
Yeah, well, based upon feedback that we get back from Steve, we, we will make amendments to that policy and re-present it to the board at the reorganization meeting.
Okay, so now we have to vote. Prove the first reading. Thank you. Okay, the next is adoption of board policy 8261, internet safety, internet content filtering policy. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the first reading of the policy I just mentioned. Do I have a motion? Pam, second. Deb, any discussion?
Yes, there are no changes according to the document we were given. I'm wondering, why do we need a first and second reading if there are no proposed changes and it's an existing policy?
Not sure if it's one of those ones that we have to do every year, Barbara, but I will check, okay?
Usually the ones we have to do every year in July. We usually do them all together at the reorg meeting. So to do this in June with no changes doesn't.
Barbara, why don't, why don't you move that we waive second reading and just adopt it?
Well, we shouldn't have to adopt it. It's already adopted. It's in place.
Are we looking, are we looking, do we need to have, Ben, do we need to have a reauthorization date on this?
I don't think so.
Okay, good.
So I don't know what we call that under Robert's Rules of Order, but I would just toss it out.
So we're either removing it from the agenda or tabling it till we know for sure that we don't need to adopt it?
I, I don't, I will check for you. Okay, so you can table it if you'd like to table it and I will get back to you on that, okay?
Okay, so we'll table it just to make sure. And if we don't need to, we will take it off.
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay. Adoption of board policy 7516 opioid overdose prevention. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the first reading of the opioid overdose prevention policy. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Barbara, second. Deb, any discussion?
This policy is unusual in that it has a tremendous amount of detailed procedure that's normally in the superintendent's follow-up to our policy. I'm just wondering, are we required to have all of this detail? You know, why, how did it get in there? Normally, if we ask for more detail in something, we're told that, that, no, that goes into the superintendent's regs that come after the policy.
Maybe we can ask, ask Steve to research that one for us as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way, that's, I mean, I, I believe that's the way it came from BOSI's, all right? But I, but I can certainly check that, all right?
So are we tabling this one also? Oh, no, we can accept the first reading and then find out.
Table it for a major revision. I mean, it's got so much detail in there that we normally just don't put in policy.
Yeah, we need, we need some more material for our reorganization meeting.
Yeah, and I won't have to vote at that point. It'll be a much faster meeting. I won't be there.
So we're tabling the first reading of this until July?
I think we have to vote on tabling. I, I made a motion to table it. I think.
We, I mean, we also, you can accept the first reading. And then obviously, you know, as we, as we amend, that would, you know, be part, but either accept the first reading or table the first reading.
And we will. So in between the first reading and the second reading, there, you can make changes?
Correct.
So then why don't, we may as well just accept the first reading so that way we could approve it at the next meeting if.
Makes sense.
Okay, so do I have a motion? To accept the first reading?
We had one already.
Oh, that was the discussion, right? Okay, so do we have a motion to, I mean, vote on, sorry, vote on accepting the first reading? I. Okay. Next is execution of stipulation, ST 2021-01. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approve the special ed stipulation, ST 21, 2021-01 for the 2020-21 school year and direct the superintendent to sign such stipulation on behalf of the board. Do I have a motion? Pam, second. Barbara, any discussion? Vote. I, all in favor?
Barbara, are you trying to talk? Are you on mute?
Sorry, I didn't realize. I just had a quick question. It doesn't affect the vote. Just how does the cost of the stipulation compare to what the cost of our recommended placement for that student would have been?
I believe a positive. Kind of where the Kim is, uh, Kim is on. But obviously, we're, you know, any of the stipulations around special education, usually the end result of those are a more efficient resolution. We will have some comments from Kim that I will email the board.
Okay, so I think we voted, right? Barbara, I think you didn't stick up your, how you voted. Okay, so all four of us, okay, four of us voted in favor. Okay, the next, acceptance of donation. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept on behalf of the district donation of $1,000 from Scholarship of America and who respectfully request that said funds be used for professional development. Do I have a motion to approve? Deb, second. Barbara, any discussion other than thank you for the donation? All in favor? I. Barbara, okay. All approved. Okay, next is response intervention plan. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the response to intervention plan as shown in the attached. So I have a motion. Barbara, second. Second. Deb, any discussion? All in favor? I, thank you. Adoption of the 21-22 school year calendar. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the calendar for the 21-22 school year as shown on the attached. Do I have a motion? Pam, second. Deb, any discussion? All in favor? I, thank you. Another, another donation. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept on behalf of the district a donation of $500,000 from Stephen B. Schoenfeld Foundation, who respectfully request that said funds be used for the high school cafeteria remodel project. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Second, Pam?
Yeah, I, again, I, I wish we were not virtual. I would very much like to invite Steve to a, an upcoming meeting to thank him for his generous donation. Because of Steve's generous donation, we are completely renovating the high school cafeteria. Again, we were putting in, we're updating and upgrading the entire facility. But I think the highlight is going to be that we're putting in a great deal of glass in the high school cafeteria facing the, the outdoor area outside of the cafeteria. And I think it's going to be, the cafeteria is going to look really, really, really nice. And I think it's going to be a place that the high school kids are really going to appreciate once the construction is completed by September. So we thank, we thank Steve for his very general, very generous donation to, to our school district.
Yes, thank you. All in favor? I. Thank you very much. Next is modification to employee, employee agreements. All of the management, management confidential employees agreed to freeze their salary for the 2021 school year in light of what's going on with the economy and COVID and all this. So we thank you very much for agreeing to that. It helped, helped keep our budget in check.
With, again, just with, with great appreciation on behalf of the school district that our, our management confidential employees are such a key part to the, to the smooth running of our school district and that they stepped up and volunteered based upon the, the financial crisis that we're all facing. So a sincere thank you from our, our school community, I'm sure our Board of Education and the superintendent for, for this magnanimous move on their part.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Barbara, second. Pam, thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to mention for the public, a lot of people don't know what management confidential means. So, but I'd like to point out, in addition to our administrators, we're very grateful to everybody who's, who agreed to this because that's a lovely gesture. To not, not even ask for any increase. And in some cases, maybe not take an increase. You might have been entitled to. But I want to point out that there were also clerical workers on that list. And we are just very grateful to everybody who agreed to be part of it. So thank you. I don't know if it's clerical or, I don't know exactly what the category is, but thank you to everyone who agreed to be part of that.
Oh, and, and you may notice that Hank is not included on that list, but that's because he has already agreed not to take a salary increase for the past, how many years in the past and the future, so.
I, I believe that I, I am on either year eight or year nine with a frozen salary at my request.
Thank you for that. Thank you to everyone for that. Do we have a vote to accept that, approve that? Thank you. Okay, and we are up to approval of schedules. Do I have a motion to approve schedules A 9719 through?
U 319.
U 319. So I have a motion to approve. Pam, second. Barbara, any discussion?
I had a couple of questions on there. Part of it, I just want to say, we're lucky to be in such a good situation that we're funding some reserves here, so. Thank you, Victor, and also happy to see that we have reserves that we can use for all of the retirees who are getting, you know, vacation payouts and final, final payments. But I also had a question on the instrument rental. A few years ago, we changed, we changed our instrument usage so that we had more purchases and less rental. I'm just wondering how that has worked out.
It has worked out very nicely. We purchased, I believe, most of the instruments instead of over a three-year plan, over a two-year plan. And there's, oh, we'll always rent a few because you don't want to over-own instruments that you may not use. So there'll always be a few that we're going to rent on an annual basis, but it's nowhere in comparison to what it was two, three years ago.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So let's vote on approving the schedules. All in favor? I. And again, thank you and congratulations to all the retirees. We really appreciate all your years of devotion and hard work for our district and our students. And do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Pam, second?
Before we adjourn, I think we have to set our reorganization meeting. We need, we need a motion for our reorganization meeting executive session at 6:00 PM on July the 2nd. Open session at 7:00 PM on July the 2nd. So we need a motion, please?
Say you should meet.
You were going to recommend we meet every day.
I'll be there.
Pam, motion, second. Deb, all in favor? I.
And just as, as a concluding comment, obviously, there are many issues that are still up in the air based upon the governor's, the governor's directives for summer and for fall. And as, as soon as we hear any clarifications from the governor's office, from the Department of Health or from the State Education Department, we will be sure to share that as soon as we receive any information with our school community. And obviously, we will stay in close touch over the summer months.
And Barbara, we will miss you and thank you for all your service. And like you said, our meetings might be a little shorter, but we, we appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. I want to thank, I mean, I know this has been a long meeting and I know that there, we're honoring retirees who've been here much longer than I have. And I know they share this sentiment. I want to thank everybody that I've worked with, all the board members from all of my years, all the administrators who taught me every acronym there is. The, the support staff who answered all of my questions behind the scenes and helped us out and got packets to us when they were paper packets of thousands of pages and learned how to use computers because I insisted we had to go paperless. And thank you to all the parents who have stopped me and the supermarket or called me and to teachers who've done the same thing, who had issues that they wanted to be resolved. Oh, God, I'm probably forgetting some group of people. Thank you to everybody who came out and voted so many times and challenged me to be the best board member I could be. I thank you so much. And couldn't have done it without you. It certainly was not me doing this. It was all of the help that I had behind the scenes. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with all the different boards I've been with all these years. And thank you, and I wish the best of luck to the new board, all of you who are here, plus Divya on July 1st. And I'll be watching to see how that goes. Congratulations to all of you and best of luck.
So I think we had motions to adjourn the meeting, but we didn't vote on that. Is that correct? Is that where we?
I think, I, I think I interrupted, yes.
Okay, but we'd had the motions. We just have to say, just all say, we vote to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? I. Thank you, everyone. Happy summer.
Hi.
Thank you, Barbara. Good luck, Barbara.
Thank you.